So, if I could request we bring the meeting together into order. I, because of, this is our first meeting following an election, take temporary chair just for the purpose of opening the meeting. And then by the town bylaws, by the charter, I turn it over to our secretary to continue the meeting and go through the process of a reorganization. So, just before I do that, I think it's best to recognize both Lisa Augusta and Jackie Abrams, our new school committee members. And because this is the meeting following the election, at our next regular meeting, I know whoever the chair is will want to recognize both Kathy Bailey and Mike Karowski for their service following the election, so, in their terms as school committee members. So, for the purposes of tonight, I wanted to introduce those two individuals and congratulate them on the election. And then without any further ado, I'm going to ask for a motion to give temporary chair status to the secretary who is our current secretary. Do you have there?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
And if I had a gavel, I would hand it to you.
Here we go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay. Now, we'd like to start, and we're going to be looking for nominations for a chairperson for our school committee right now, going forward.
I'd like to nominate Chris Coyle.
And do I have a second?
I'd like to nominate Jan Larry.
So, we don't have a second for the nomination for Chris Coyle. So, my understanding would be that that motion is still on the table until it's either seconded and it's voted, and then a second, there could be a second vote for a second person, second nomination following that, if that, if the first person doesn't prevail.
I'll make a second nomination for Chris Coyle.
Okay, to choose one. So, then we need a vote.
So, but if I, I want to make sure that that's squared away, everybody has that understanding, that then, then there's a vote. If that motion doesn't carry, then there would be another process for the nomination of, of a second motion, of another motion that could be made for a different member.
Go.
Are there any other nominations?
Ah.
So, we have a nomination for Chris.
Right.
And we're a nomination for Jeanette. We have a second for Chris from Lisa. So, is there a second for Jeanette?
Right. So, Jackie's nomination would be a first motion for Jeanette.
Right.
And then we'd be looking for a second nomination for Jeanette. And then, there'd be a vote?
Yes. Then if there are no other nominations, we will close the nominations for chair, and then we vote.
So, is there a second nomination for Jeanette?
So, now we just close. How do we do it?
How would you do it?
You know?
I mean, I mean, is it, is it?
I think maybe I had it right the first time. So, there's a, there's a first and there's a second for a person.
Right.
And then people vote on that person.
Right.
And then if that person doesn't prevail by a majority vote, then it's open again for another first and a second.
I think it's, if you read four, motion, second nominee. Are there any other nominations here? There is, so you, first, second.
Right.
Close the nominations, motion to vote.
So, then they're taking, then they're taking in order of the nominations. So, then the committee will vote on the first person that was put forward.
Correct. And then you may or may not have a second vote for the second person.
Right.
Okay. So, unless we, we could always take a, we could always take a recess and work that out to make sure that that's exactly right, or we could, if everybody has an understanding of it, any questions, we could move forward.
I think it's...
Okay.
What have you think this is?
So, if I have it right, we have a motion for Chris and a second on that motion.
Yes.
We, right now, we have on the table a motion for Jeanette.
Right.
From Jeanette.
Yeah.
Correct.
Is there a second for Jeanette?
I, I'll make a second for purposes of, if she was nominated, I feel like it should be out there, and then we vote after that.
That's fine. So, are there any other nominations for chair of the Abington School Committee? Hearing none, we, I need a motion to close the nominations.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded by?
I'll make a second.
To close the nominations.
To close nominations, sorry.
So, all those in favor of closing?
Oh, all those in favor of closing?
Aye.
Okay. Now, nominations are closed. So, now...
Now, you make the motion to elect Chris Coyle as chairman of the school committee. So, somebody...
Do you have to vote?
And then we vote, if each one, yes.
Okay. I get, okay, so...
So, the motion to elect...
Motion to elect Chris Coyle as a chair of the Abington School Committee?
Was made by Wendy.
Was made by Wendy and seconded by Lisa Augusta.
And if, and then if Chris doesn't prevail in that vote, then there would be another vote following that for the second person.
Right. So, we're here, right?
So, then, all those in favor?
All those in favor, got it.
Of what? Of Chris Coyle.
Of Chris Coyle.
So, you just raise our hand and say aye?
No, it's like...
So, we have a motion, we have a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Nay. Okay.
Okay, so those...
So, we need to know the vote.
And Jeanette?
So, just to make it clear.
Jeanette takes a vote?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Okay. So, you don't have to go to the second.
So, in favor, so Lisa, your vote was?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeanette, I mean, I'm...
Yes.
And Jeanette?
Yep.
Yes. Chris?
Yes.
Jackie?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we have a chair.
So, because that was so much fun, the chairmanship is now turned over to Chris. It's like you did this.
Good.
Sorry, guys, about the awkwardness and the bouncing that I, just wanted to walk through slowly.
Yeah, I apologize too. Learn experience. So...
Do you want to gavel?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'll ask for nominations for our vice chair of the Abington School Committee.
I'll nominate Jeanette Larry for vice chair.
I'll second that.
And Teresa's writing it all down.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And then, so...
And Jeanette, are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations for vice chair of the Abington School Committee? I'll make a motion for Wendy. Is there any seconds? No seconds. So, motion to elect Jeanette Larry as vice chairman of the Abington School Committee, motion by Jackie Abrams, and seconded by Wendy Happel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, five, five zero.
Okay. So, do you notice?
Yes, it is.
All right. Secretary?
Any nominations, I'd like to ask, any nominations for secretary of the school committee?
I'll make a motion to nominate Wendy.
Second up.
Are there any other nominations for chair, for secretary of the Abington School Committee? I need a motion to close the nominations.
I'll make a motion.
Second up.
I second it.
So, motion to elect Wendy Happel as secretary of the Abington School Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
Great.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, everyone. So, here, this is the subcommittee structure, which, just let Chris or I know, your preference for subcommittees. Did you want to explain enough?
Yeah. So, if I could ask the committee to recommend, if I could ask the chair, because what's happened in Abington before is that the, the chairs ask people who wanted to participate in certain functions and try to match people's desires to those subcommittees. So, there's two in particular from this list, and then one item that I'm going to, that follows about the Abington cable access I'm going to talk about. But in terms of subcommittees, I'd ask that it would be good for us to have another person on this finance and then the unit A collective bargaining. So, in, in a meeting we had, prior to this, we talked over some of this with the attorney that we're using for collective bargaining, and one of the options we have is to, you could have a subcommittee of one person if the committee wanted. We just need to know that you want one person on the committee rather than two. So, for business and finance, Chris, you were serving in a capacity with Mike Karowski. Mike's no longer here. The committee could, you could appoint another person to that subcommittee. In terms of unit A collective bargaining, we're right in the middle of negotiating the teacher contract, and Wendy has been doing, has been a member of that subcommittee along with Kathy Bailey, who is obviously not here any longer. So, the committee could appoint another person or decide to leave it with one person for each of those for the interim. We just, we just need to know, because in terms of posting the meeting, whether we're posting it with, if it's a subcommittee of two, we want to make sure both people are represented. The, answer any questions people have about that? So, either looking for a second person for each committee or to decide to keep the one we have in place.
But the rest, we can kind of hold off until...
The rest we can hold off.
All right.
So, yeah, we've already, we've already got meetings scheduled with the association coming up for, for May 15th, and June 5th, and June 12th. And so, we want to make, we want to maintain that schedule with them. We don't want anything to slow down the process.
And the meetings last a few hours, and they're usually before school committee, so it's just a big commitment. So, whoever, if you want to do it, just know that it's most of your afternoon into the night.
I mean, I'm, here's where my comfort lies, and I'll ask you guys, if somebody wants to do it and can commit to it, then I'm all for two people being on there. If they can't, then, because I know I can't, I can't commit to that. So, I understand if somebody can't, and if it's okay to have one, then I think we go with that. But if somebody felt, if there's more than one that wants to do, we can discuss who should do it, and we can't, we don't want to have three. So, is there anybody, anybody here besides Wendy who would like to be on the unit A collective bargaining for the rest of the, at least for the rest of this session, and then we can adjust it after that too, if we wanted to?
I'm interested.
Okay. There's no motion necessary for that, correct?
It's just an appointment of the chair.
And, anybody else?
Yeah.
All right. So, Jackie Abrams will be joining in the unit A collective bargaining. Likewise, for the business and finance, town meeting's in 13 days, so we're kind of wrapping up that anyway. But if anybody would want to join, no, that could be just me, that could be just one person meeting as well, right? If anybody wanted to be on that, at least, you can stay on it beyond, or at least for the rest of this term. I don't know if there's any interest in that by anyone. So, maybe we'll just keep that one, just to leave them for now, since it's the most...
Well, I mean, that is not, is as vital as the collective A, I mean, what is done with our budget. I mean, we're not going to be making any great changes that are going to constitute a great deal of meetings. So, I think maybe if we want to allow the new members to think about...
Going forward, yeah.
These things, and then regroup at the actual meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That may be better.
I mean, even the past, I think we even got to it until June, because of the way it always worked out, so, yeah. Okay. You okay with that?
Great.
All right. And the rest, as you look them over, let me know something you'd be interested in. I think, Teresa, does anybody have, like, who was on it last night?
In the packet.
Just has an idea?
It's in the packet.
And the school council liaisons, what we can, something that this school would prefer, let me know, try to make it work. That could be tough, just because there's one per school, so...
I don't know if you want to know that now, but I would be happy to replace Kathy for the middle school school council, because I have a lower injury in the middle school, so...
Yeah, I'll tell, I'm gonna, let me, let me just take everybody's notes on that, and I'll...
Sure.
So, the rest, we're gonna wait up?
Yes.
Okay. If I could, can I explain a little bit about the non-school committee members, the director of the Abington cable access?
Yes, because I don't understand it.
So, according to the bylaws, the Board of Selectmen School Committee appoint a non-member of their board to, to the cable access. It's a position that, that hasn't been filled in a little, in a little while by the school department. And so, again, this is someone that is a non-member, but would represent the schools with that. I've been told there are at least three meetings annually. There perhaps could be more. And I was also told that Chris O'Neill is someone in the community that would be interested in doing that. That does not mean that Chris O'Neill should be the person that you're interested in sending, but I was told that Chris was interested in that. And if you know Chris, he was active, he was active in the vote for the school building group ADC, so...
So, what is, I guess, what exactly, do you know exactly what they have to do?
So, I was provided this by Henry DeCarlo. In case that question was asked. The Abington Cam bylaws, Article 3, Section 2, I'll read it if you, if you'd like for the people at home.
Sure.
The Board of Directors shall have five directors. Subsequent terms for all foregoing directors shall be for three years. Successor directors shall be appointed or elected following expiration of the initial term as follows. The Board of Selectmen will, in its discretion, appoint one successor director to the position held by the selectman appointed director serving the three-year initial terms. I believe we're past those terms. The school committee will, in its discretion, appoint a successor director to the school committee appointed director. Successors to the other initial directors shall be elected in accordance with these bylaws by the corporation's membership. Each director shall hold office until his or her successor is elected or appointed, unless removed prior thereto in accordance with the bylaws, with the law in these bylaws. Any director appointed by the Board of Selectmen or the school committee shall not be a current member of the Board of Selectmen or the school committee. So, but I believe that...
I'm clear.
That, you now know what I know.
So, is it a three-year appointment, or is it one-year appointment? Does somebody know they're beginning into three years?
I believe it's a three-year appointment.
I think it's three years.
That would be my only, if somebody wanted to do it, I'm all for them being able to do it, I just don't, do they know it's three years? I don't want to, I don't want to stick them in something that they might not know is three years.
Well, I think that's his.
They've, if, if you want to wait, we have, I know they're very interested in filling this, that's up to the committee. We could do, we could, you could come back, because it's an appointment.
And Chris has expressed interest?
Right.
I was told...
That's what I was told too.
I was told he was. Chris, I have not spoken to Chris directly. So, I didn't want to have a conversation with him, because I didn't know what the committee would want to do about this.
I'm comfortable with Chris if he wants to do it.
Yeah, if somebody, if somebody expressed interest, I'm coming, as long as they know the, I don't want them to think it was like a one-year thing, and then they get three, I don't want that's happened to me kind of thing, you know what I mean? But yeah, I mean, I mean, is, you know, going on, I don't even know, or just, I mean, is everybody okay with that, if he's willing to do it?
I think if he wants to do it, he asks first.
So, because appointments are made by the chair, you would make that appointment?
So, I'll make, I'll make an appointment for Chris O'Neill, but I just want to, with the caveat that he understands the term length, basically, so...
One second.
Do we need to vote?
I don't think so.
No.
I think it's a chair of points.
Chair just won. Okay. Chris O'Neill.
Okay. So, moving on, consideration of job description for a director of student services and director of curriculum instruction and assessment.
All that changed is the format.
Yep. So, what you're getting are, the difference between this and what you had in your packet are two things. First of all, the format was different between these two job descriptions. And I want it to consist in format. The second thing is, and it's in, it's in bold italics.
Twenty-three.
Is the administration licensure?
Number two.
Yeah.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, I didn't have what you guys just, I've got my hat on. Thank you. So, under the director of student services, number 23 oversees district-wide enrollment evaluation procedures. And on the, the director, the director of curriculum instruction assessment, added administrative licensure preferred. If that's someone who's going to be doing evaluations, they'll need that administrative licensure.
Okay.
So, other than that, it's what you've had. And so, can I just, I'll just describe to you what we're trying to do with this for the people at home that are catching the middle part of the story.
Yeah.
So, with the likely change in Dr. Thomas going to Pilgrim Mary Collaborative, we want to be ready to advertise a position for a director of student services that is more focused than Dr. Thomas's current office. So, this will provide more of a focus on student services, special education services, those other support services in Abington. So, we're not looking to hire two people to do that job. What we're looking to do is focus that job that didn't has as a director of student services. And then, what happened was, we took other items from that office, and we placed it in a directorship for curriculum construction and assessment. These are actually job descriptions that currently exist in Abington years and years and years ago. And they are now being revamped prior to potential advertising. So, one of the things that I've got for you tonight is a full rundown of how the director of student services would be vetted in terms of a committee and a process that involves a broad group of people. So, I just want to talk through this with people, if I could, and I'll take any questions that people have. So, we'd like to advertise as soon as we can. We are already late trying to find someone to replace Dr. Thomas in such an important role in our district. Special education directors, director of student services are hard to find, good ones are even harder. So, we would want to advertise as soon as we can. We would establish a screening committee the week of May 21st. That screening committee would review expected personal qualities, expectations, and the job description, and match, try to match that with interview questions and the paper screen, and determine the final candidate recommendations for interviewing. They will interview candidates on the, the week of the 28th, hopefully. Sometimes these get delayed. This is a, this is a tentative goal. I would interview finalists the week of June 4th or 11th. And then, I would introduce the recommended candidate to the school committee. The committee, this isn't, this is a committee appointment in Massachusetts, so I will be recommending the final candidate to you at the end of this process. The committee of people, in terms of the search, would be comprised of two parents. Hopefully, we'd have special education parents from the, from the elementary and secondary level, one of each. We'd ask for two members of the special education advisory committee, one Abington school committee member. I'd like to ask tonight if you could tell me who that will be. Four faculty and staff, hopefully a team chair, a special education teacher, a service provider of our students, and a special education teacher. I'd be looking for an elementary administrator, a secondary administrator, a central office administrator. That would be Felicia, because I would be there as an observer, so I could collect all this information and then have a final interview with candidates when the screening committee sends me a list of people to review. So, that's the process for the director of student services. For the director of curriculum instruction and assessment, one of the things that's been talked about is doing an internal posting and/or an external advertisement. Sherry Fedorowicz has been fulfilling a part of this role in the Abington Public Schools as the elementary person in this role for the last five years. She's in the middle of a three-year contract. Should that process, if it's going to be a fair process, and I don't think that it will, but if it, if someone else rises through the process, then Sherry still has a contract here. And it's not, it wouldn't be appropriate to do that process now, because Sherry has that contract here. So, we could do a couple of things with this. We could wait, and then, in a year, do that advertisement and that posting, so that it's a, it's a full process. I have every reason to believe that Sherry would, would rise to the top of that process. And, but, but to do it, to do it differently would be not a genuine process, because Sherry has a contract with us. We're not going to hire an additional person to take part of this job. We're not going to hire two people to do it. That would, we just don't, we don't have the resources to do that. If we had the resource to do it, we'd probably spend the money differently, because there are, there are many needs across the district. And so, we would wait on that selection process after a year. So, in the interim, there are still things in this job description that need to get done. And so, what we could do is, they could be paid a stipended rate or an hourly rate to make sure that we were able to do those things. Hopefully, Sherry would be able to help us with those things, but I have not fully talked about that with her, so to assume that would be wrong.
So, what are our options?
Well, I'd like to ask you to, to vote both of these job descriptions tonight, so that we have them in place. The, the process is outlined here for the director of student services, and then the process for the director of curriculum instruction would wait a year, following this school year.
Have we voted them separately?
Sorry?
Vote them separately?
Uh, yeah, vote them separately, please.
So, I'd make a motion to accept the job description as presented for the director of student services?
One second now.
Yeah, just to be clear, nothing... Peter, just to be clear, nothing, nothing was taken, I mean, I don't know all of Dr. Thomas's roles required, but nothing was taken away in this process from what she currently does, it's just kind of rearranged?
It's rearranged within those two positions. And then, because, so for example, things like the support of English language learners, it was, it was, you know, services, perhaps previously it said student services, and now it says things like student services to include but not limiting to, limited to English language learners. And some, so some of the things are better articulated in this, but not taken away. Added were things like the, the registration of students.
And by appointing, and by approving this, this kind of comes along with it, right?
It, it's, you know, I'm certainly open to suggestions on this.
To guide, anyway?
Yep.
Okay.
This is the process I believe we should follow.
Okay.
The role of the school committee in Massachusetts is to approve job descriptions before they're, before they're published.
Yep.
And if, and unless I'm using one that isn't, hasn't changed in any way. So in order for this to take place. And so, no one is responsible for the timing of this, but we have a set of facts here, and we have to do the best that we can with that set of facts and that timeline.
I'm sorry, we need to, to write out the conversation.
Can you drill?
Chris, the only thing that is, is my office also did the investigations for staff and students, and so that won't, will not be under either one of the roles. That will then move over to Felicia.
Okay. Okay.
Title nine and sexual harassment.
Okay. So I'll ask, does anybody have a motion to approve the director of student services job description as presented?
I already made that motion.
I second that.
Yeah.
She's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, following that up, I'll ask for a motion to approve the job description for a director of curriculum instruction and assessment as presented as well by Peter Schaefer.
I just have a question on that. So, did you say, Peter, this is going to be posted held for a year? And then post it internally, externally?
Both.
Both.
And at this time, if Sherry or somebody else takes over some of this, they'll then get...
We would have to agree to the terms and the additional work. I should mention, you raised a good point. This overall for the Abington Public Schools does not cost us more money because we're taking the current money we have and doling it out differently.
Right.
Yep.
So this is actually, we're approving a job description to be used in the future because we're not currently changing Dr. Fedorowitz's job description.
Correct. But there will be things that, pending this discussion, I'm going to, I'm going to ask her if she would consider helping us with. Because there are things that need to get done, and it wouldn't be in this job description. And she's done a good job.
So approving a job description that we have when we need to reopen it to look?
Correct. So this timing of this shouldn't change this job description in any way. If it did, you guys come back and think about it again.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Can I make a motion?
I don't know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks. So...
Yes.
How do you get your people, the full club of the subcommittee? Do you send you a letter, do you an email, are people that want to be on it? Please let me know.
Yeah, please let me know. And then, if there's a school committee member that's interested in surveying, I'd be interested in knowing because, again, we'll all put this together. You guys are all here right now.
I can do it if somebody else doesn't want to. I mean, I've been on a couple, so it could go either way. Somebody else wants to crack at it, feel free, but otherwise I'm available.
So, this question, is that going to be July 1st or is that, do you remember?
So, for director of student services, it's a great question. It's gonna, it's gonna coincide with July 1st, so we'll, because it's important for that person to hit the ground running with the opening of the school and the services that are required. So in the first year, this doesn't save us money in subsequent years.
Who will start in July 1st? That's great, I just didn't know. So I'll be mentoring them for a while. Perfect.
If we have someone in place, which is right around the corner, realistically.
Well, they've got to be in place for the beginning of the school year.
For the opening of school.
Right, July 1st is our fiscal, but they could really come on after it's done.
Right, but, oh, prior to school.
Okay.
So if it's the end of July, don't call me a liar, but it's when they're able to start for the full school year.
Okay.
So...
Are you staying till like September, like for the extended summer program and all that, your media?
Yeah, so I'm here, actually, I, I haven't given my resignation yet. We're in the, just the final stage of signing, so once that's actually signed, then it'll say October 31st because I'll be starting November 1st in the next place. But, yeah, I'll be here, so feel free. But now I'll have somebody else to delegate it to, so that's even better.
I just want to say, I think it's nice, Dikna's done a lot of work in a lot of areas for a long time, and I think it'll be nice, and you probably would agree, that to have the director of student services really focus some energy specifically on special education because it's a huge job, and you've had many other jobs in addition to this job. So I think that it's a nice change to see a really laser focus on special education.
Thank you. And I also think that by splitting it, there'll be a laser focus on teaching and learning.
I agree.
And that's a benefit for all kids, so I think that it's the right way to do it for Abington, so...
So, when people are ready, I'd ask if they'd consider a motion by roll call vote under Section 21A3 of the Ominwa to discuss bargaining with the Abington Education Association and not to the public school.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thanks.